So the mayor says he lost internet and he can't get in and he asked for Mike to start the meeting.
Okay, all stars in the meeting. Called our order, the regular meeting of the Winter Heights City Council Tuesday, September 2020, roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Here.
Joseph Jones.
Here.
Mike LaFredo. Did we lose?
Looks like we lost him too.
Okay. Um, Mike Jones.
Here.
And Teresa Harms.
Here.
Uh, approval of the agenda, move to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Dennis, I assume that you have perhaps some prepared remarks. If the mayor had some, he certainly didn't give them to me, so I suppose this is your first city council meeting, so welcome aboard. How was your first day?
Thank you, it was busy. It was good to get to know everybody. The top priority I was able to achieve today was finding where the bathroom was in City Hall and that was important, so. It was a good day and I talked to a lot of people and I'm looking forward to tomorrow. It's gonna be a busy week. Thank you for having me.
Glad you're here. We have, looks like, two speakers from United Way, Dave Stone and Elizabeth Buck. Believe they're gonna give a presentation on the 21-day Equity Challenge.
Well, thank you for having us. I don't know if I can share a PowerPoint. I don't know who's the host of this meeting, but should I try or?
Yeah, that's me. Go ahead and try.
Okay. Host disabled, participant screen sharing.
Oh, and this is my first one. There we go, just a second.
You'll have to make her a co-host, Travis, for your calls.
Okay. Now you're a co-host.
Okay, let me try it again. Great, that worked. Can you guys see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, Dave and I are here to talk to you about a project that United Way Central Iowa has been working on and convened. We started this last fall. So we've been working on this for a number of months and we're not claiming that United Way Central Iowa is the expert on all things diversity, equity, inclusion, but we are using our power as a convenor to bring the community together for a community learning for 21 days. We know through research that it takes 21 days to change a habit or behavior to learn something new, so we are excited to bring this to our community and to share with you a little bit about it. And Dave, I don't know what slides you want to take, but I can start and then you can take any one that you're interested in, but or chime in for sure. So our goal with this project is that we get at least 10,000 Central Iowans to participate online in this daily learning. So every weekday, starting on October 5th, participants who sign up to be part of the challenge will receive an email on a topic, one of the diversity, equity, inclusion topics, and they will receive an email that has a number of different ways they can learn about this topic. They can do a reading, they can watch a video, they can do a podcast. And it's, uh, we will also have a journal so that folks can journal their learning along the way. It's free to participate for anyone. All you have to have is an email. And we will also have a discussion guide that'll be available for groups if they want to convene folks to talk about what they've learned during the challenge. Then at the end of the challenge on November 10th, in partnership with the Greater Des Moines Partnership, we'll be convening an Equity Summit. We did not create this challenge. It was created by a gentleman named Dr. Eddie Moore, who's a national expert in this area. He was educated here in Iowa and lives in Green Bay. And he first created this for a food bank in New Hampshire. And we learned about it last year when a United Way in Ann Arbor, Michigan did this. We have set up, or how we organized this is we've set up a steering committee of about 35 people who are helping and guiding us on the content for each day. We've got some companies and a couple of foundations who are helping us to pay for this. And we have secured the business publications, Business Record will be our media sponsor to help us get the word out about it. And what we've been doing over the last couple of weeks or months is really trying to get as many organizations as possible to sign on as supporters of this meeting, that they think this is a worthwhile endeavor for individuals to come together as a community around this learning and that they'll help us spread the word to employees or others who might be interested. Right now, we have about 290 supporters who are working with us on this. This is the list of steering committee members. I know it's hard to read. It's a lot of people. It's about 30 individuals. And it's co-chaired by myself and Joshua Bahr, who's the Des Moines Human Rights and Civil Rights Commissioner. Um, let me kind of quickly review the topics that we'll be covering during the 21 days. The first week is foundational, really getting folks a basic understanding of the effects of racism, bias, privilege, racial identity, identifies, identity. We've talked today, identities. And then we're gonna start to go into some of the equity gaps that are present in Iowa and in our country around wealth, housing, segregation, immigrants and refugees, Black Lives Matter. Then on the third week, we'll start going into health, mental health, gaps in early education, adverse childhood experiences, education, the justice system, LGBTQ, the intersectionality of all of these issues, what it means to be an ally and how we can all help and how we can help to make sure our workplaces are inclusive. We have set up a website to help us organize this challenge. And it's equitychallenge.org and participants can go on and sign up to be part of this challenge and it'll start October 5th. We've got about 3,000 individuals currently who have signed up to take the challenge. And every day that from, from starting on October 5th, participants will get that daily email. And then all of the information that's in the email will remain on that website so that you can go back and look at previous day's content. So if somebody starts the challenge after the 5th, they can go back and look at it. This is kind of what a daily email will look like. Let me go to the next one, that's too hard to read, so small. So this gives you an example of just the four different ways that you can learn about understanding biases. In this one, there's a radio interview that you can listen to. There's a reflection or reading you can look at. You can take the implicit and hidden bias quiz. And then you can, there's a article about, you know, now that you know what your biases are, how do you, what are some of the tactics that you can do to ensure that your actions really line up with your intentions. So we'll have some journaling questions then after, on each day, and then we'll preview the next topics for the next day. So if you're interested in being a supporter, we have right now, I'm just pulling this up. The cities that we have currently signed on as supporters of this project are the City of Ames, Ankeny, Des Moines, Dubuque, Indianola, Iowa City, Urbankdale, Milwaukee, and West Des Moines. So you go onto the website and sign on as a supporter. And then we will share with you ways that you can, you know, sample emails and other ways you can get the word out to your community about the opportunity for folks to participate in the challenge. And then during the month of September, we'll be working to recruit the 10,000 individuals to sign on, so we'll have a little bit of paid media, but a lot of earned media and social media around this to get us to that goal of 10,000 Central Iowans taking the challenge together. Dave and I are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Just one thing to add there, sorry, real quick, is that that steering committee is taking a look at the curriculum and providing local resources and articles and such so that there is a bit of a more central Iowa feel at times.
Elizabeth and Dave, thank you for sending this over to us and we very much appreciate it. I think this is a really cool program. I think it will require us to have a resolution. And so I would just, if, the will of the council, of course, but Dennis, if we can maybe create a resolution or we can direct the staff, maybe Erin, you can give us some direction. Do we need a resolution or can we just direct the staff to probably need a resolution to do our public support for this?
I think a resolution, there's no, as I understand it, there's not a monetary outlay at this point, but I do think a resolution just to solidify the stance of the council would be appropriate.
Thanks Erin.
You're welcome.
What do other council members think? Is this something that we would want to ask Dennis to put a resolution together for?
I would second your, your request.
Thanks, Mike.
I'd be supportive, but we are supportive as an institute from my day job, so I think I would not do any different here for the city.
Great, so we'll have, if this could be prepared for our next council meeting.
Twenty-first, I think.
Thank you. I was looking for a calendar. Is that enough time? For, for Elizabeth and Dave, is that enough time for you guys?
Sure, it just depends on if you're gonna, then what your thoughts are about how you promote it within the city, if they're I don't know what your communications are, you know, through newsletters or to your employees or whatever your thoughts are on that, but they, as I mentioned, the challenge, the actual challenge starts on October 5th. So you still have a couple of weeks.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
And I know that, um, we were discussing, Susan and I were discussing with Whitney about meeting for a couple of different issues as far as communications goes, so. As far as what type of stuff we could get out there, I think we can probably add that to our, our discussion agenda as well.
Dennis, did you have a question?
I was just going to comment that typically organizations like this have template resolutions that they could forward on to a municipal government. And I'm sure if you have something like that, Travis can work with you to put something together for the meeting on the 21st.
I think you're the first city to ask us for that, so I don't know that we do have a template, but Dave and I could probably put one together, can we, Dave?
Absolutely, we can put some skeleton stuff out together for you.
Yeah.
Well, and out of curiosity, the other cities that I suppose signed on with support, do you know, did they accomplish that by resolution?
I don't know. I could do a quick survey of them if you want me to, but I, I don't know. They just signed on under our website.
A number of the city managers just made the decision in discussions with council and signed up on behalf of the city. But we have not had a resolution thus far.
Well, if we can accomplish it without a resolution, I think that would probably be the easier thing to do. Any other questions? Alright. Dave and Elizabeth, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I see you're back on.
Yeah. I lost both telephone, internet and yeah, and the passcode wouldn't work for me since I didn't have a phone. My cell didn't work on it, so. I'm down City Hall, we're good.
We're a public forum.
Okay. Time set aside for comments from the public on topics of business other than what's listed on the agenda. Do we have anybody who wants to make any comments? Do, please identify yourself, name and address.
Hi, it's Edie. I just want to make some general comments on behalf of the Winter Heights Chamber of Commerce. We have some upcoming events. I just want to make sure the council is aware of. We would love to have your participation in. We are doing the official ribbon cutting for Mojitos on the 17th at 10:30 a.m. The 17th at 10:30 a.m. will be the ribbon cutting at Mojitos. We also have a featured speaker of Dr. William Yost. He is the head of Medical Education and Research for Unity Point. He will be giving a, doing a Q and A on COVID-19. Should be, is a very exciting event for us to land this presenter. So on the 18th at 9:30 a.m. will be a Q and A. There will be emails in more detail about these events. But just wanted to bring them up so you could have them on your calendar and then also just to make sure people are aware of movies in the park and I'm sure that will come up again later in conversation, but that'll be on the 25th.
Thank you.
Edie, where is Dr. Yost speaking?
It will be registered through our website and then you will get a Zoom link.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you. Next item is consent agenda. Motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
And I don't know, is Mike LaFredo's phone number, does it end in 1464? Do you know?
Yes.
Okay, I'll unmute him. Well, Mike, if you can hear, hear us, you need to unmute. Uh, Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Was that a I from you, Mr. LaFredo?
Go on.
Okay.
Next item is consideration, second reading of ordinance 20 day 07, amending the code of ordinances to further define surfaces allowed for parking on private property and add parking prohibitions for private property for purpose of sale.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo. Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is consider waiving a third and final reading of that same ordinance 20 day 07.
Move to approve.
Second. Just to confirm, there have been no public, there have been no written comments.
I haven't seen any. Mark, have you seen any?
I've also gotten no comments. There was one comment on Facebook that was supportive of the change, but I haven't seen anything else.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Okay, roll call. You.
Dave, can you unmute me? Can you unmute me?
Travis?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you now, Mike.
Okay, finally, yeah, thank you.
Were you voting in favor of the last two items?
Yeah.
Okay, so we get roll call on that one, Travis?
Not yet. Susan Skiris.
And this is for the third and final reading, correct?
Yeah. Pass it.
Yes.
Um, Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yeah.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration, resolution 2021 04, the resolution retiring the Economic Development Grant Program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, discussion. Yeah, I would like to make a comment. Or, should that be eliminate that grant program or should we wait for a while longer? As there may be needs that come up that we might want to use it for.
I don't think so. From Susan Joseph, I think we kind of decided that that was to be retired and replaced with the tax abatement program.
That's right, and we didn't see any, any reason to continue this particular program. I think that if there are further economic development needs, the, the committee could come up with something better than what this was. And I think this particular program, the reason we're retiring it is that we a while ago thought that we had when we created the, the abatement program and so this is really cleanup, but I'm not gonna speak for Susan. And I started talking first, I saw she unmuted, so go ahead, Susan.
You're fine.
You guys want to remind, I'm sorry, Susan, I apologize. Do you want to just remind Mike what that, what, what we're retiring and if not to be confused with a grant program? We just issued money through, not the same.
That's what I was gonna say, that this is completely different from the Economic Development Grant that we gave to small businesses.
Okay, and I think I understood that. I think I understood that.
So.
Okay, go ahead. I mean, Joseph answered it, so he's obviously concerned.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
LaFredo. Mike, are you there? Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration, resolution 2020 105 to set the time in place for a public hearing for the ordinance 20 day 08, which removes the requirement for rental property signage to be provided solely by the city and setting the size and placement limitations. Believe that will come up for on the 21st council meeting. Do you have a motion to set the time in place?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on it?
I would just like to say that I'm, I'm happy to see this this ordinance kind of go away. It's been a problem that I have had for basically ever since it started, just because as Chief McCluskey has, has written, the fire department is the one that has had to deal with this and taken all the checks and kind of go about making sure that this program worked and I'm not so sure that it's really a fire department's job and we don't seem to have very, we have four rent signs that look completely different. And then we have the ones that are actually abiding by our ordinance. And so I like it that this is kind of taking it and making it kind of clean up a bit in our city as far as having the fire department not be the ones in charge of this.
Any other discussion?
Expand on that a little bit, Mayor, for those that are watching or listening that aren't aware. The current code requires any four rent signs to be only on a sign owned by the city. We take a $65 deposit for that through the fire department. There's of course a cost to manage that, cost for the signs. And we refund that entire $65 deposit when the signs are brought back, so it's actually a net cost to the city to operate this way. And it, it just doesn't make any sense, so. And also, as I stated in the council action form, there's more cleanup to do in the, the rental code that will be forthcoming, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo. Mike, you're still muted, if you can hear me. Mike Jones.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration, resolution 2020 106 provide direction on the engineering design of 73rd Street. Any discussion on that before we? Dalton, you want to say some words about this one?
So, the last time this came to the council, it was after we had the traffic study completed. So you guys received and filed that traffic study, but you wanted to get some public input to see what people wanted changed on this corridor. So we put a survey up on the website and it was referenced in newsletter and Facebook posts and stuff like that. Received 30 something responses on that, I think 34, 35 responses. Generally speaking, most of the responses, I'd say decent portion of the responses had something to do with that turn lane over by Clive Learning Academy, basically between college and the south entrance to their south parking lot. So, starting on page 46 of your packet, there's a resolution, there's a summary of all the comments. And then page 51 is just kind of a map showing where people clicked on the corridor to say, here's where my, my comment corresponds to, so. Generally, you can see there's, there's two more or less clusters of comments. One of them is by the school, one of them is by University Avenue. Some of the comments were a little more ridiculous, you know. Do the street right now and some of them were really well thought out, so. Yeah, if you had a chance to read through them, I think people are supportive of what you guys are wanting, which is, I think, from what I understood, a turn lane, so. Before we cut the engineers loose to tell them to continue on with their design, I just want to make sure that's what everybody wants.
Hey Dalton, I had a question. I looked back at this. I wasn't at the meeting on, on July 6th, but I'm curious if when, can you remind me when the study was done, when the traffic study was done?
It was, the counts were done pre-COVID.
Okay, so that's what I, I just wanted to confirm that we did do that when school was in session, so.
Right, Justin, that was pre-COVID, right? It was like the week before, I'm pretty sure. I think so, but give me a minute and I can look it up quick.
Yeah, I, I think I'd like to confirm that because if we're saying that the, the counts don't support that, but it wasn't at a point in time when traffic, as you all know, I'm the, the Clive mom that deals with the pick up and drop off. And it impacts, as you know, more than people that live in our community, because, you know, we have Urbankdale and Clive and West Des Moines kids that get bussed or dropped off at that location. I did appreciate the comments though, thank you. It was helpful to read through those and kind of get an understanding. And I agree, there were some really well thought out and, and good recommendations. And I know one of the things, and I didn't see, there were certainly different comments, but not a lot of comments about, and I know that that Dave has brought these, this up before, but some sort of better crossing at 73rd and university from the biking perspective and so you know what, I don't know if that's been part of your conversation or consideration as well, but if there are any additional thoughts and how we also might collaborate with Clive, I know that's been a conversation in the past, but to address the, the bike crossing to connect to the trail at some juncture there too continues to be a priority and something I hear regularly from people about.
Justin, if you're still looking, it says data for this study was collected in early March 2020 with turning movement counts collected March 3rd of 2020.
Yep, just got there. My internet's slow, so that's correct.
Alright, so it would have been the week before COVID, so, and the week before spring break. Thank you.
Hey Justin, when we were talking about that 73rd and university intersection with regards to the bike, is that, was that considered hardly at all or was there more consideration given? Or was there more consideration given to how to make that crossing better? Just on the university project, not necessarily on just the 73rd project?
It was more just a lust, try to make that crossing a little bit better. I think a lot of it is what I've heard from the past is people bypass that intersection. They cut across what, maybe a hundred feet north into a couple, through a couple of driveways and come through. So we're trying to widen it as much as we can at the intersection. Whether everybody follows it or not, we'll see.
Justin, I think.
Go ahead. I was gonna say, but that's in the plans, right, Justin?
Yeah, it's only, yeah, it's just that part of that intersection, you know, it'll only be one side that gets done.
Good. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to say that you're, you just hit the nail on the head that that's exactly what happens. People just, they, because if they don't hit the lights right, they can cruise down and then cross a rapid cross down to go on the trail. One of the things that I know has been discussed before in the past, and I again, not sure what concern or what consideration has been given to this, but whether or not there's another place to connect that isn't on the roadway. And so I know there have been conversations about, you know, whether or not there's, you know, some sort of tunneling or bridging or something like that. So I just throw those considerations, you know, again, they might be more on the Clive side and that's why it might be a conversation with the Clive folks. But I just wanted to throw it out there.
So in our park plan, one of the major comments that we received as far as improvements on the trail system is an improved crossing at this intersection. And there is a few, a few responses to our surveys and public comment where people want to have a trail connection back behind those commercial properties underneath the University Avenue Bridge, behind like the European Flavors building, behind Interstate Battery and then down. So I just did some very rough site work on that. And we're talking a lot of money. So I think that's, I think that's in the final draft of the parks plan, but it's definitely something we've been looking at. It's just getting into the brass tacks, you know?
Okay. Thanks for the update.
The direction is to provide to the engineering design to do the turn lane right there nearby Clive School, Clive Learning Academy. And also to potentially relook at the intersection at 73rd and University in conjunction with that. So whether we get it on the current project or whether we get it on the 73rd Street project, at least we'll get direction from you folks to look into it. Am I reading that correctly?
Well, to, to clarify with regard to the bike lane, I'm sorry, bike lane, the turning lane. The traffic counts didn't support it, right?
No.
Okay. But are we comfortable saying that if that turning lane did exist, that traffic flow would be improved?
Yeah, I think that's probably safe to say.
Okay. That's all, that was all, only question I had.
Yep. So they model the, the traffic counts on, they call it level of service. And so really it's, they base those standards, level of service, A, B, C, D, E, and F. It's kind of a cost benefit. So everybody, we have level, I think, average level of service on that corridor was C or D, which is totally acceptable by DOT standards. See, you're C or D. And you think, oh my gosh, we're not doing well. We need to improve and get to an A or B. Your level of service, A or B on all your roadways means you're overbuilding them, spending a lot more money on stuff than you need to. So if we make that a level of A near the school, I'm sure people will be happy. It'll just be a little more expensive. Think the estimated construction cost, Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, but estimated additional construction cost was like $170,000. So we got to bump the street out into the right of way a little more. So it's just kind of shifting some alignments that on, in the grand scheme of that whole project, that's not an insane amount of money. It's, you know, it's just not necessarily supported by data. So just wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page before we told Bolton and Mink to continue on with the design.
Dalton, thank you. Thank you, Dalton. I was going to ask about what would happen with property and how, I couldn't remember how that worked if we were, what would happen if we would have to go into the right of way to add that turning lane in? Or kind of what, what, how that would all kind of work together?
Yeah, yeah. So if we're going to make the roadway water, we'd get more into people's right of way. So the rub, get closer to their houses.
Reese, did you have a comment?
I, I do. Just one more question. So as I read the resolution, it says that to, to address the center turn lane and any other comments that we'd like to address. So my question is, are there other recommendations then from these comments that you guys are looking at? Or are you just looking at them at full and then bringing them back? So is there anything else in here that was, that you're, that you've embraced or that you're, you're planning on including? I know the center turn lane is the significant piece, but just wondering if there was anything else that you guys are highlighting or are going to dig into?
Not really so much for me. The one that stuck out really, so there was two, two that stuck out, improve, just generally improve the intersection at University and then add the turn lane. So I think given general direction to improve that intersection is what Bolton and Mink would have done anyway. But let's state that in the resolution. That would be fine as well.
One additional thing from the public safety realm on the, there is a comment on there about a radar sign. And you may remember that when we let the ATE contract expire, the discussion was I've got two radar signs connected to that project. And one of those, we discussed moving over on 73rd. I just got to decide if we want it northbound or southbound. But the company that had the ATE contract is responsible for removal of those posts and devices. So that's why we're waiting on that is to make sure we don't have any conflict with that requirement of the contract before we move those.
Thanks, Chad. That was one of the things I was going to bring, bring up as we know that that is a constant speed area, high traffic, just and because people flow and there's no other natural slowing device there on the street. So, so that would, that was one that I saw in here that I think would I'd like for us to make that part of the consideration as we build out that road. And then, and maybe we should have one going each direction and budget appropriately for that food for consideration. But then also maybe if you, if we only do have one, do we want to, can we look at our past traffic data? And, you know, figure out which direction had the most tickets from our past data. I don't know if you can get into the minute details of where those tickets were issued in which direction or not, but that might be food for thought, I guess. So I guess I'll continue to look through this. Those were two that I think popped out at me. Specifically, I know one of the other ones that makes it, that's hard. But that were on here were the, the crossing at Washington and College because that jogs there. And so again, I don't know if there's anything else to do. You can't really change the location of those streets. But again, maybe just thinking about signage or mark, street markings or something like that. I'd, maybe there's an opportunity to do like a sidewalk outlet or entrance to the street from on 73rd to cross at the, at the Washington sidewalk. Or there's not, there's not, is there a sidewalk on Washington? Now I'm questioning myself. There's not a sidewalk on Washington. There is a sidewalk. On the south side. So maybe that's food, maybe that's a consideration, just throwing those ideas out there for consideration as, as we continue to do that. So whatever we can do to improve the streetway, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Who would like to frame a resolution to that?
I think there's a resolution in here. I think it probably is in here. I'll just move to approve.
Okay.
So currently we've got in there just the, the center turn lane. So I think what would be helpful for Justin and his design team is to clarify any additions you'd like to see on that resolution by a motion, just amending the motion. Mr. Mayor, that's okay.
That's fine.
Well, it, it does say in any other comments that you would like to address from the public period. So it's okay. I'm happy to amend the motion to say, in addition, I just don't want to limit it to that. If we come up with, you know, you come up with some other recommendation, I'll come back to the council anyway. But to add the the crossing at University and 73rd and to add the radar awareness signs and some sort of sidewalk crossing to, from college to, to Washington. Is that fair?
Ever she get all of that?
Yeah, just restate it one more time for me, please.
Sure. So the central lane is already in the resolution, the center turn lane. So the intersection that 73rd and University for bicycle crossing safety. The radar awareness signs potentially going both directions on 73rd. And the sort of a sidewalk entrance crossing from college to Washington.
Are these being made as requirements or?
No, I think, isn't this just part of, we are, we're requesting them to look at as they do the build out. Isn't that the?
Yeah, take a look at it.
Direction.
Yes.
That works for me because some like Theresa, you're talking about crossing there. Not sure how well that would work. So we just have to look at, into some of that stuff.
We've had discussion, motion that Theresa did. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo. Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration resolution 2020 107. It's a resolution requesting reimbursement from Iowa COVID-19 government relief fund.
Move to approve.
Need a motion.
Second. Teresa made the motion. I will second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion on it?
Hope we get it.
We, we are already guaranteed $114,293. That's our guaranteed amount. So, and we will, we'll definitely meet that and they'll, we'll be able to get that money. So.
Right.
Thanks. Rochelle, how much was that again? $114,293.
Thank you.
And 41 cents, if anybody cares. Probably just me, but.
Every penny counts.
Yes, it does. I will write that down.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo. Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration resolution 2020 108. Awarding a contract to OPN Architects, provide concepts and scheming, schematic design of a community center flood wall improvement in the amount of $19,190. Motion to approve.
I'll move.
I can.
We get a second.
Dalton? Yeah, I did a second.
Okay. Thanks, Theresa. Okay, discussion. Dalton? Go ahead. We're running over each other. I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to ask Dalton to give, if he could give us an update from the Public Works Committee on what the recommendations were, kind of big picture, because I know we have a couple of pieces here to consider. So if we could kind of get, or, because I know that Mike LaFredo and Mike Jones, I think you're on Public Works too. Can you guys give us an update on the Public Works Committee, kind of where they are globally? Because we're kind of back to the piecemeal of this. And I was hoping at some juncture, we might be able to get kind of a big picture of, of what the recommendations are so we can have a bigger understanding of this. So we can know if, you know, just, just help us understand if you would. Thank you.
I can give you a rundown, Teresa. So we had our initial meeting on flood mitigation back in June. And Dalton gave a pretty detailed presentation about our options. We talked about flood proofing, talked about moving the shop, underground detention basins, inflatable flood wall barriers, or just purchasing insurance among other things. And it was actually John McKee who had a very interesting idea about removing the fill from under the I-235 bridge. So basically taking out dirt to see if water could flow through quicker and therefore, you know, bring down the amount that may pool up in the, in the park. Dalton had, and I'm, I'm just taking this from some of your emails, Dalton. He had an architect, a landscape architect and an estimator, among others, to come out and look at what it would take to recover the shop as well as the community event center from a flood. And in short, if the CEC flooded, it would likely be a total loss. And regarding the shop, I think it was an estimated cost of around $90,000 to recover. But I think Dalton said that about 30,000 comes from repairing or replacing a generator. As far as sort of the big solution on removing the fill, Dalton worked with Bolton and Mink. And they did some flood modeling. And unfortunately, they said it only showed a minimal reduction specifically, it would only be about a half of a foot. And if we're looking at a hundred year flood, both the CEC and shop would be under two feet of water. So at the most recent meeting, once we talked about all that data, it was not a tremendously popular idea considering that we could be looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of construction for only, you know, around a half of a foot. But despite that, no one could actually say what the actual cost of construction would be. And so I believe Bolton and Mink is going to put together a scope of services just so we have a, sort of a, a very concrete number as to what, what it would look like if we were to pursue something like that. I think there was unanimous consensus that we had to do everything we could to save or protect the event center, considering what it means to the community, the fact that it's newer, it's a newer building, it generates revenue. So there was pretty much widespread support into inquiring further as to what it would take to flood proof the building. I think that was a unanimous support for that. And so I think there's actually a architect, Dalton, you can correct me if I'm wrong, to speak about that.
So a couple of other things I might add in there, in there, Mike. There's going to be a scope of services probably coming to the September 21st meeting for that. Bolton and Mink flood modeling, the work we've done so far on the flood modeling was less than a couple of thousand dollars. But the work that to get a better idea, we're going to need to spend a decent amount of time and money on it. So we just want to make sure we've got it all spurt away. Joining us tonight is Rick Sealy from OPN Architects. Rick is the architect, that principal here at the Des Moines office. And he's been working with me extensively on these conversations that we've been having for the last probably three months or so. Rick's here to talk about his proposal for for his scope of services on, on the council agenda tonight to flood proof the community center. Probably walk through why, why he's proposed this option and all that. So with that, unless anybody's got any other questions, I'm going to hand it over to, to Rick.
Thank you, Dalton. Appreciate everybody's time this evening. I had an opportunity to get familiar with what the Public Works Building and certainly the community center. In that process, we put together a very quick concept just to give you all an option of what might be possible. In that process, we put together a very quick concept, just to give you all an option of what might be possible to reasonably protect the building. That concept is basically putting a seat wall around the perimeter of the building, outside the current concrete paving that sort of surrounds the building today. It could potentially become another amenity, if you will, and facilitate additional use in the facility as well. That wall then has a couple openings in it, those would be flood barrier areas where you would have to insert a temporary flood barrier to further protect the building. So there's some issues certainly with making sure that there's time to, to do these things and to consider what that might look like, so that you all can react to whether that is a viable solution and whether the timing potentially can work for you all, and just in terms of the operations for the building. That concept was put together just to sort of start the conversation, so since then, Dalton has asked us to put together a proposal on what it would take to implement something akin to that concept. That proposal is, I understand, something that's still going to come to you, but it's divided into a couple parts. I think it would be wise for you to go a little bit further with some of the concepts that we have started. That would take us through schematic design and allow you to get a better understanding and more accurate understanding of what some of the costs might be. Our preliminary look at this, just to put, put some of the construction concepts in place that we're suggesting at this moment, would be about $380,000 to $400,000 to actually construct it. Before you spend that kind of money, I think it would certainly be wise to take the concept just a little further to verify some of those things, because we made an awful lot of assumptions in that process. So the proposal that will come before you is divided into two pieces. Part one takes us through schematic design and gets you a more accurate estimate. Make sure that our concept is something that you certainly want to move forward with, make sure the design is something that's acceptable to you and the community. And then if you choose to go further, there is another portion of the proposal that would take it through the other four phases of design and construction to bring it to fruition. So I think it wise to just spend the first phase in the schematic design and not go any further until we can learn a little more and bring back some better information that you can all react to. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, but I think that's maybe the first step that the Public Works Committee thought seemed viable, and I, Dalton, you'll have to speak to that if I misspoke.
Thanks, Rick.
I think maybe.
Go ahead, Mike.
I think maybe everyone is probably hoping that there's like an easy answer to this, and there actually really isn't at all, and it's primarily, it has to do with, and Justin or Dalton, you can, what I got from the person who did the flood modeling or the, whatever her, her position was, but the issue is not so much what we have in Windsor Heights, there is problems with elevation, sure. But the issue seems to be with what we have downstream and the things we can, cannot, cannot control in our community. And so unless, you know, we're talking about digging out the entire corridor of Walnut Creek between 235 and Buffalo Road, you know, it's, it's very difficult to, to talk about complete flood mitigation, especially when in the future, we expect it to get even worse. It's about where the water is going, not so much where the water is in our community.
You know, we provide very little to the actual stream, to the creek, it's all coming from up above, and there's no place for it to go below. Yes, you're correct, Mike.
So this is Theresa, I think one of the things that we have talked about, and as Dalton has presented options, we know that there's no silver bullet, right? I mean, that's just the, the reality of, of where we are at this very moment. I think some of the things for, that are questions that I have and for consideration are, so when we start adding things up here, we're talking about right now $35,000 in expenses. I guess one I would ask is where are these dollars going to come from, do we, do we budget them? That's one question, and then the next question is as we, what, what is the, I don't know what the value, and I mean, this is just a, I'm just trying to put the, kind of the numbers. I'm a business person, so I'm thinking about what's the value of our community center, what's the value of what we're ensuring? What's the, what's the revenue that it is bringing in annually? And then the question for the architect firm is, at what the, the wall proposed that you're building, is that two feet, is that four feet? Is that, what kind of flood barrier does that provide for us? And is that something that we are looking at for just the next two years, knowing that that, that probably is gonna continue to grow? And, and if we build this today, because I don't think people thought when, or when the community center was built, that we were in that space, and so I want us to be thinking about the future, not where we are today, but where do we need to be, you know, 15, 20 years from now, or whatever that is? Because that's what I think we need to be planning for, so those are some questions that I have that I think we need to be asking ourselves and considering is if we're gonna, you know, potentially put $400-plus thousand into protecting this building, I'm not saying that it's not worth it, I'm just trying to figure out at what point in time, what's the cost benefit of that? And I think that's something that we have to ask ourselves and make those considerations before, before we do move something forward, is I think we have to kind of understand the number impact.
Well, Dalton, I think we, we, we talked about, actually, I think we talked about every single one of those things with regards to the revenue, what the, what we believe the building is worth, you know, loss over time. As far as the architectural question, he's gonna have to answer that, but Dalton, I don't know if you still have those numbers with regards to, you know, what the revenue was for the past five years, I could pull up on, pull them up on email. And then I believe there was some sort of specific documentation as to what the quote unquote value of the building is. If you don't have those things, I think I can find them.
Yes, so this year is obviously a bit of an outlier, the revenues on the community center are, are not great.
Sure, and I, you probably know what they were previous to, what was the three-year average for this year or something?
Anywhere from $147,000 to $104,000.
So I didn't hear your last number.
$184, so we've gone anywhere from a $66,000 gain on it to right now, we're at a $308 loss, because we, we, we reimbursed so much. To your question about whether or not this is budgeted, no, I put that in my write-up in the staff report, it's not budgeted, so. I also make, wanna make sure that we're being very clear now we're paying for this. I want all the expenses at the community center expense budget, so that we can make sure we're tracking those expenses and not artificially inflate our revenues off of that building. But we would have to do a budget amendment for it at the end of the year, so.
Rochelle, can you tell me, and again, you may not have this at your fingertips, but how much money is currently in our community center expense budget?
$64,000.
Thank you.
And Dalton, was the worth of the building, 1.2 million, is that what the building's worth?
Yeah, I think that's, that's like the insured value.
I, I didn't put a memo together, I was going to and decided not to, because I didn't want to insert any of this stuff in there that might, I should have. It, it, to me, spending this kind of money to, on a $1.2 million building, you're gonna spend at least $382,000 plus whatever it's gonna cost to, to do the arc, to, to do the first piece of it. I'm just a little confused by that. I, I guess you'd have to convince me, convince me that the numbers make sense, because right now, to me, they don't make any sense at all. But, but I'm not counsel, so.
Well, we're not talking about doing the entire, I mean, the $19,000 that we're talking about is not the assurance that the, you know, $300 to $400,000 will happen. It's to get a better idea of how the project will look, and I don't think it was answered. I, I want to know, Mr. Seeley, what was the, again, the height that we were talking about of this wall?
Yeah, great question, thank you. It, it's anywhere from probably 20 to 24 inches, depending on the area of the building, is what I would estimate. As I, as I tried to offer, it was a, we envisioned it as a seat wall, which basically then gets this up past the 100-year flood component or the flood level. You certainly want to be looking down the road, down, down the road as well, because those values or those flood levels could, you know, appreciably change in the next 20 years. That was some of the discussion I think that was had at the Public Works Committee meeting. The estimate that we put together just looks at a seat wall, it doesn't take it any further. Our concern is at this moment, we don't really want to make this facility look like a fortress, we want to make sure that it continues to be inviting. So there may be other ways, and that's what's really the proposal will help us do, to increase the height of that, potentially it's a seat wall in the back. We just want to make sure that you're comfortable with what that wall is gonna do to the visibility of the building and make sure that it still remains an inviting community space for, for your, for your Windsor Heights.
So will you only consider a wall, are you, because I'm, I apologize, I'm trying to listen to all these pieces and processing things in my head, are you looking at other options as well in that space?
Well, a couple other things just to consider, you don't wanna, you could put something against the building. You could put together a wall or a berm, if you will, but those two things can be accomplished together or do the same things in sort of a similar location. And then there's more aggressive flood mitigation measures that you could do either permanently or temporarily. So I take away the, really the temporary flood mitigation issues, because I, I don't think that you have the speed to react to that of flood situations, so I think there's going to have to be something permanently built that is visually acceptable to you and your community. I'm hesitant to put anything against the building, there's a structural surcharge for the water. I don't, it starts to close off maybe some of the lowest windows in the building, and you're actually, if you choose to use the building itself and the condition it's in, you're, you're actually giving water access into some of the water cavities with inside the wall that actually help keep the masonry in, in, in good shape. So the most cost-effective option in my mind at this moment is really doing something a little bit away from the building, making it, you know, an integral part of the design and amenity to the building, and rather than putting something at the building or doing something more aggressive with other flood mitigation measures.
And Rick, Rick made a great point, or John McKee asked our Public Works Committee meeting if we wanted to make it modular, so we can make it taller later. I don't know, Rick, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, I, you certainly can do that. The foundation that would go in for any kind of seat wall was put in place for primarily frost, but it's going to certainly be adequate to be able to expand later if you choose to do that, and that's something that we could make sure that we consider if we were to advance the design for you.
Any more discussion on that?
I'm sorry, my internet is kind of spotty here, I totally did not hear the wall height, I got everything.
24 inches.
24 inches. Thank you.
20 to 24 inches.
Thank you.
If I may, I'm Bob Bishop, 1128 64th Street. I want to welcome Dennis to the city, and I thought I'd give a little historical perspective, going back to before this center was built, and I won't go through it all, but I think what's relevant here is when it was originally designed and the bonds were to be issued, the financial entity would not issue the bonds because it was not elevated high enough. And the city chose not to elevate it to the recommendations and elevate it to the current level. I think I agree with many of the council members in that it doesn't make sense from a public standpoint, that's gonna look, that's gonna just destroy the look of it, we should buy insurance, and we should get in the same boat with the other 150 homeowners that are gonna, gonna suffer for the same, same type of damage from the flood. You flood, you rebuild it, we can't fix it, you can't dig the hole. The true fix is plug your sewers and build a levee, just like they did downstream. But I appreciate the council's time, and I look forward to seeing your recommendations, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob, I was gonna say the same thing, one of the questions that has been also spinning in my head is by putting something like that, how does it impact then the residents of the area? And how does this push the water further up, how, I mean, I'd, I'd want to understand that piece too, I don't, I, that's not my, not my expertise, but I would want to understand the impact of that to the homeowners in that area. Because we already know this is a, this is a huge issue for many of them. And we've heard from them, we've helped them clean out their properties. And, and we know that they're gonna be the first to be impacted.
Can I ask also, going back, way back to the fill part of this, where we talked about 235 Bridge digging that, what, so we may gain, what was it, half an inch or something like that?
Point four feet.
So if, if we, if we gained even at the community event center that much, what about the residents in the area, would they benefit from this digging that we were doing? Or is this, would this not be a benefit to kind of help protect them as well?
You dig it out, you're still gonna end up with approximately 0.4 feet, so how much that's gonna impact the residents up there, it's not a whole lot.
The, the map that was shown to us from the, the engineer from Bolton and Mink, I don't believe it took any, I don't want to misspeak, but I don't believe it took any of the residences that were already in the flood, you know, the 100-year out of it. Dalton or Justin can correct me if I am wrong, I don't believe that it did though.
So it's, keep in mind that they're working off of LIDAR data, and LIDAR data is not high quality and dialed in as survey data, but from the preliminary results that we saw from, from our initial review, I'm sorry, from our initial review and modeling, is there was minimal impact to the surrounding neighborhoods from removing that fill under I-235. But to really justify, continue, continuing to spend funds on analyzing that, I've asked Bolton and Mink to put together a scope of services to like clearly define some goals. Because we gotta be able to set cost benefit to see if this stuff is worth it, so Bolton and Mink is gonna have a scope of services. OPN has a scope of services, I mean, but before we've even made decisions on what right looks like here, we're gonna be in the wholesome money regardless, just paying the smart folks to do their, their consulting, so. I definitely understand the hesitancy here, but I think it's.
Dalton, what's a cost benefit right now of your proposal for the, for the schematic design of the flood wall?
Yeah, so it'll, it'll prevent or significantly reduce the likelihood of flooding, but as far as what the actual ratio is, is it 90% or 110%? We don't have it, I don't, I don't think that we will have it until we've got more information from OPN.
Okay, so then my next question is, would that eliminate the need for flood insurance then, or we would still continue to have flood insurance?
So that's something that I had a conversation with a plain administrator from Bolton Mink up in Minnesota, and I don't think that it would completely eliminate it, but it would likely reduce our rates. As what we've looked at here, and in that concept, it's the wall with the plate that we would slide in, because the thickness of that structure is dependent upon workers installing it, it requires some amount of manpower, it wouldn't completely eliminate the need for flood insurance. You'd need something like a legitimate berm with pump stations and stuff. That, that is like, I could turn it into a fortress, so it would reduce the rates, by how much, we're still working on that, but it would reduce. Like Rick, I did turn it into a fortress. So it would reduce the rates by how much? We're still working on that, but it would reduce.
I just feel like we need, and this is, I come back to where we started this conversation, and I'm not trying to stall this at all, but I feel like. We still kind of have this piecemeal approach to this, and I feel like we don't have kind of the, the, all of the parts that, that we need and all of the information to be able to make a decision about how to move forward. And I, I, I think I, we maybe mentioned this before, and one of the reasons we sent it back to, to Public Works Committee is. It sounds like there's a lot of pieces yet to this. I'm wondering if. Once you have those pieces, if that would justify whether bringing them back collectively or having a work session specifically to address this. At that time, and then we can say, okay, here's all the pieces, and this is our recommendation about how this would work at this time. That's just kind of how I'm feeling right now. I think maybe our best bet at this juncture is to move forward with insurance until we have the. Until we fully understand the other pieces and understand how they work together, because there is no one silver bullet.
Dalton, how many engineers, I mean, just in general, have discussed any of this stuff?
Probably no less than a half thousand.
And that includes and Minister McKee being a formal, former engineer. But ideas coming from the Public Works Committee. Architects, designers coming out, talking to you about ideas, things like that.
Yeah, I mean, if you're going to extend it to like floodplain managers and architects, well over ten.
And so what is the cost of insuring the CEC? I guess this is for Rochelle. What is the cost of insuring the CEC for ten years?
Like a hundred and fifty grand.
Yes, a hundred and fifty, a little over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And then.
Twenty years, just to sure.
And so what does it, what did it cost to build the community event center?
I do not have that number.
Somewhere around a million and a half. But it was kind of all, it was all lumped in with the park project. So I think they did one bond, bond issuance for. A lot more than just the community center.
And we don't have any sort of projections about what, what it will look like in ten or so years with the, with the flood levels of the hundred year flood?
I'm sorry?
We don't have any sort of projections about where the flood maps will be and with the hundred year flood in say ten or twenty years.
So I asked that same question. Stormwater management's getting significantly better, but our flood levels are never going to be any better than they are right now. We can just hope to slip. Entire depending on our stream neighbors.
So tens and tens of people have looked at this, talked about ideas, Public Works Committees approved this. Making this recommendation. My understanding is from UMass harms, that that is not acceptable.
It's not, not acceptable. I just think that we need, we don't know, we don't have the numbers. We don't have what the cost benefit is. We don't. I mean, none of that information's been provided to us. We've been throwing some numbers here today. But, and then we've not looked at this from a big picture perspective. So you are correct, Mr. Jones, that, that I feel like I don't have the correct info, all of the information necessary. And I look at this from the perspective of we're, we're going to, we're going to take this building that averages. One point two million dollars in value that is going to cost us to insure fifteen thousand dollars a year. So over ten years, you want to potentially invest a half a million dollars into putting up some sort of a, a structure to help protect it. In the same time, we're going to have to continue to pay insurance. And so at the end of the day, then what value, if that wall doesn't serve its purpose at the end of the day, because there's more floodwaters than that and the building still gets ruined. Then what, why did you put up, why'd you put that structure up if it doesn't serve its purpose? And so I think you have to look at this from the, as a business decision. And at the end of the day, you say, what is the value of what you're purchasing?
Well, apparently it's not worth the value of a flood wall, it would say.
That can be, I, I don't know, because I don't think we have all of the information is what I'm telling you. I understand you might not make decisions, but I, I, that, or that you haven't done that, those things in the past. I, I have, and that's, I, just because I. Just don't agree with you at this juncture, doesn't mean that I'm right or you're wrong or any of this. And so I don't know why you're.
The ask right now is for the twenty thousand dollars to see about the effectiveness. In the future.
And in the interim, ensure it, which is the next resolution.
So hence my position, which is I would like to see additional information and what options. But looking at this holistically, because I just, I don't feel like we have that. I feel like it's a little bit of a shotgun approach. So my, again, my opinion. For what it's worth, I don't, I just, I look at the cost benefit of this right now based on the information we have, and it doesn't make sense to me. My opinion. I wouldn't invest in it.
I do have a question. I think the dogs have stopped barking here, but what about approvals needed? And the impacts for people that are downstream from this? Do we need approval from the, the state, the federal? You know, for anything such as building in the floodplain or digging under two thirty-five? Have we looked at that? Is this even an option for us to gain approval for this?
I think that was a question for Dalton.
The DOT has given us permission, I'll just go one by one here. DOT has given us permission to dig under thirty-five and to core out that stream quarter. The DOT has given us permission. Now, the DNR is a different story entirely. If we're going to completely dig that whole thing out, we're going to have to do some stream bank stabilization projects as well. So it's not going to be as easy as just going in there, digging it out, walking away. You're going to have to tie all back together. So we'd also, like you said, we're going to have to have permissions from DNR, FEMA, the EPA, and the Army Corps of Engineers. Since they're all regulating authorities, since that is technically a water of the state. So yeah, I mean, it's, none of these options are going to be good. Same, same with putting up that flood wall. Is it going to have, it's kind of like the conversation that we had last week, Susan, about the street project impact and flooding. Is it going to have an impact on flooding downstream? Sure, I guess. It is going to have a marginal, to say it won't have any impact isn't accurate, but it's going to have a marginal and negligible impact on flooding. We're not talking about damming off the whole park, just that one building. So that much water, two feet of water on a sixty by a hundred and twenty pad, I mean, that's several thousand cubic feet of water. But when you're, when the whole park is flooded, you're not talking about adding millions of cubic feet. So it's, it's not. I think that it would be allowed, but there would definitely be some hoops to jump through. Then going back to the, the flood insurance versus not, the wall versus not. So we can continue to get the flood insurance, but I just wanted to stress this again, the National Flood Insurance Rate Maps. And the National Flood Insurance Program, NFIP, is not designed to make the insured party whole in the event of a disaster. So it's a very common misconception, oh, you know, we'll just let it flood. FEMA isn't going to give us this money and we'll build it back the way it was. That is not the case. They're going to give you enough money to get the place into decent working order. So they're going to restore your life sustaining systems. Your electric and your HVAC. They don't really care about your drywall. They don't really care about your architectural elements, your, your doors, your toilets. So. It, it's. I mean, just I want to stress that flood insurance is not meant to make you whole as a business owner, a public property owner, or a homeowner.
Dalton, can I, can I also ask, so when has the community event center been flooded out? It hasn't only gotten to the steps, is that correct? Am I correcting my memory on this?
Right.
Didn't get either place in fifteen or eighteen.
And.
Way below.
And what type of floods were these again? Thousand year floods, hundred year floods? What, what floods were we on?
They were, they were. So it depends on where you were in the watershed, but I think in Windsor Heights, there's somewhere around a thirty to forty year flood. So when we get, doing air quotes here, you can't, I mean, when we get the big one, it's going to, it is going to flood the heck out of that building.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, we have a consideration, the resolution to award a contract to OPN to go ahead and take a look and see what their thoughts are about doing the flood wall. Do we want to continue with that one? We have a motion. Is there any further discussion on that?
I guess I'm just looking at this from a, a money standpoint. I really. I just, I'm kind of torn because I just don't see that this is probably the best. I, I guess I don't know what the best answer is, but. I, I just don't know if this is all worth the money that we're going to put into it as we look at what our. You know, what our revenues are. So I guess that's what I'm kind of struggling with.
We have, like I said, we've got the motion on the table and it's been seconded. There's no further discussion. We'll go to a roll call and see which way it goes. Travis, call it.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Chris Harms?
No.
Susan Skerries?
No.
And Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Fredo, he is, his number's on there, but I don't know if he can hear us. So with that vote, a two to two vote, the motion failed. Right, Aaron?
Correct, it fails at two to two. Is there, is there a means to get ahold of Mr. LaFret? I, I'm not seeing his number on here.
I, I'm seeing a fourteen sixty-four number. I thought that was his number.
It is. I, I'll try to call him and see if I can get him on the phone. Well, I got him on the phone. He said he is not in the meeting either by phone or internet connection, even though his number shows up.
Was he going to try and come back in or?
Well, I, I think he wants to, but I don't think he is able to accomplish that with this equipment for some reason.
Well.
If he hasn't been part of the conversation or part of the meeting on this particular item, I would say that we, we move forward with the motion failing.
I agree. Okay, twenty twenty-one oh eight failed. Next item is twenty twenty-one oh eight A, which is a resolution to purchase the flood insurance for the community center in the amount of a premium of fifteen thousand one eighty-three. With a deductible of twenty-five K. We have a motion on that one?
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
Any discussion on that, or we already had enough?
I think we've probably already had enough, but I have one thing to add to this, which would be, you know, one consideration or thought might be, and maybe Rochelle could come up with some recommendations. But maybe we could look towards investing a certain amount of our community center profits. And, and put those into some sort of an investment account to cover any needed changes over time to this building. To, for, to be more of a flood account as opposed to. Just instead of, in, you know, putting, you know, a half million dollars into building a wall or something. Maybe we look towards something like that as a recommendation in addition to the flood insurance. Understanding, I did have a property that was ruined in the two thousand eight flood, so I've been through the flood insurance. I know how it works. A, a personal property. We had a rental home. And so that might be, I, I would say, suggest that financial advisors would tell you that's a better bet. As opposed to trying to figure out how to mitigate particularly when we can't plan for it and we don't know at what levels. So food for thought.
Yes, actually, we already, Dalton and I have already discussed that, setting aside number one, the deductible, and then starting to look at our rates. That we're charging for the CEC because they're considerably lower than everyone around us. And maybe, you know, maybe bring in some more revenue and that kind of, that extra revenue would go into an account so that we would have funds in case it did flood. So all things that I will be bringing to you guys in the future.
Thank you, Rochelle. And when I talk about, so one of the things we did this year at the legislature is we actually moved the. License plate, the Veterans License Plate Fund, because its returns were, I don't know, an abysmal one to two percent on that fund. And we went ahead and gave permission or got permission from the legislature to do, move a significant portion of that into an investment account. To be able to get greater returns on that. And so that would, it's something also that I, I think would be wise for us to consider, particularly as we're looking for something more of a long term. Something, it's not something we're going to go, we would pull for day to day or, you know, annual expensive maintenance sorts of costs, but something that we're looking for, for a long term.
Yes, absolutely. Excellent idea.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've kind of decided that we got a motion on the table to purchase flood insurance. Had some discussion, roll call.
All right, Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Chris Harms?
Yes.
Next item is Resolution twenty twenty-one oh nine. Approving a scope and fee for traffic analysis on sixty-ninth Street between Hickman and Washington. Mike called me earlier this evening and he's only one. He said he would like to remove that from the agenda, but he's not here to do that. Chad, have you heard anything more about that one?
I think Dalton spoke with him on it, and I think that was his desire too, but I think it had to be done at the beginning of the meeting with the. Approval of the agenda, if I'm not mistaken.
The, the council could still by motion delay this to a, to a further date.
So I'll move to delay this until Mr. LaFredo can be on or ask, request it to be on a future agenda.
Okay. Who wants to second?
Second.
Okay, Skerries? Was that yes for Susan? Okay, Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Tree Farms?
Yes.
Next item is Consideration Resolution twenty twenty-one ten, approve a request from Absolute Contract to work with the city engineer to determine appropriate stopping points for work on sixty-ninth and College Drive during the fall of twenty twenty and the allowance of the working days to be carried into twenty twenty-one. Dalton?
So Absolute Concrete was delayed. We'll start on sixty-ninth street. Uh, they were delayed by twelve weeks due to issues with Mid-American's uh, gas infrastructure and power poles on the west side of the road, South Mott. Unlikely that they finish, highly unlikely or I'd say impossible for them to finish that project this year. And so what I requested that they do is um, put in writing exactly why it is that they were not able to hit their deadline and put in writing what they're requesting of the city. I had Justin over at Bolton Mink, he's our project inspector on that project. I had Justin confirm the technical details uh, in Absolute Concrete's letter. And then I had Erin provide her opinion from a legal standpoint and contract implications. So Erin and Justin both recommend approval of their request to stop work at a reasonable stopping point this fall. I'm not sure if it's gonna be for at, for sixty-ninth street. I don't know if it's gonna be at the end of phase two or at the end of phase three, but uh, what we're asking in this resolution is for the permission to give the engineer and the project manager from Absolute uh, permission to make that decision in the field. The worst thing that could happen, the worst thing that could happen is to begin removals on phase three or phase four. Um, and then have a blizzard come through and get a frost in the ground because then we're not getting it paved back through the winter and it'll, it'll be a disaster over the winter until the spring breaks again. So the arrangement that uh, we believe is fair is that Absolute Concrete is accredited twelve weeks worth of working days. Plus the amount of time remaining between the date stopped construction as agreed to at the city as engineer and November twenty-seventh, which is the originally contracted completion date. And the, the sum of those two numbers would be the amount of days that they have to complete the project in the spring and summer of twenty twenty-one. So that's for the sixty-ninth street project. That College Drive project, uh, remember these are on two separate contracts, so um, they can be done independently or however you'd like. I'm still optimistic that that work will be completed and counter your twenty twenty-one, at least substantially completed. I don't know about restoration, but in the event that they are not able to uh, perform their work and complete the project, I want to make sure that we've got a plan in place, uh, because these delays were, are far out of their control. So we would, we would figure their remaining working days the same way I described as we would for the uh, the sixty-ninth street project. And Erin, do you want to maybe get into the SUDAS contract language implications of this?
Sure can. I, I had prepared at the direction of Dalton and Justin, the memorandum that's in the packet. And you'll see in there, uh, the, the full contracts are not in front of you, but they are governed by SUDAS standards. And so you'll see the extension of time requirements that are set forth in those standards and how they go about requesting that extension. The two of note here are really that prong one, weather, um, weather delays that are in the opinion of the project engineer were outside the scope of what they could have anticipated when they bid out the project. Um, and then the delay because of other contractors in the area and that's with regards to the Mid-American. So um, you know, frankly, I haven't been out to the side. I, I haven't been involved in the project, but based on the um, the opinions and advice that that I've received from the project engineer, I would say that both of those prongs apply to these two projects to justify the delay.
Thank you, Erin. Um, we also got note from the D O T at the beginning of this construction season that with the uh, the COVID situation going on, that the state D O T is not gonna be filing, or they're gonna be pretty I can't remember the exact language they use, but they're gonna be fairly relaxed and they're contracting with their contractors on overages due to labor shortages. And I think that Mid-American can probably make the claim that they were delayed by twelve weeks due to COVID. The D O T has basically told us that we are not gonna fight this fight because then it kind of gets into a, you know, the federal coronavirus relief, relief act type stuff. So the D O T has issued advice to the cities, don't even push it this year. So that's just another reason why I think that this should be granted.
Uh, two, two questions. First off, is there any sort of recourse against, uh, that could be spot from Mid-American, uh, considering the substantial delays that sounds like they are, are at fault for? Um, and then that's my first question. Second question is, is so what if we just say no to this?
So I think I'm gonna defer to Erin and Justin on that first question. My gut is telling me that we have very little recourse against them. Um, as you know, we're currently fighting with an internet service provider on one of our other projects um, with the Iowa Utilities Board and that has been going okay, uh, but there is, there isn't a ton that the board is able to do for us, so um, as far as this.
This is Erin. I mean, uh, you, uh, we could always bring some kind of claim against, against Midwest energy, but I don't think that that's gonna be a fruitful um, position to take. I think it's gonna be a timed up of money for very little uh, relief in the end.
Right. And then as far as if you don't approve it, uh, and again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean on Erin here, but I, I do not think that that would be a very good idea. I, I know that Abs- Absolute has been very good to work with this summer and I would, I would like to continue that good working relationship as these projects are finished. But if we do not approve that, I, I would be willing to bet that we will probably hear from their legal team. Uh, Erin, is that safe to say?
I would expect that as well. And, and I, the other, the other position we would find ourselves in is the reason that we wouldn't approve this would be because the city would be looking for some kind of liquidated damages in the end. Um, we've had the conversation before about trying to prove liquidated damages and what's the actual cost for the city would be. And I would expect that we would get some counter argument to that to say, well, you know, you guys could have reduced the amount of damages that you incurred had you just approved our extension and we didn't have a gaping hole open in our streets through the winter. So I mean, is that, is the liquidated damage language in the contract, was there an expectation that it would both of these projects would be complete the end of November of this year? Yes. Have there been unusual circumstances in this case? Yes. And are we in the middle of a pandemic? Yes, we are. So I think there's just extenuating circumstances here that wouldn't lend to a great argument for the city um, with regards to liquidated damages in this case. As we currently sit, this may all change, but where we currently are, um, I think it would be a difficult, difficult, difficult argument.
Okay, we've had some discussion on it. Can we get a motion to approve the request?
Move to approve.
Second. I would. Dave, thank you. I just wanted to add that, um, although I don't like the idea of this, um, I do, I would second what Dalton said about working with Absolute. Um, I've had conversations with some of those folks on uh, a couple of the different roadways. I've talked with a lot of the residents. They've been uh, very pleased um, with um, with the workforce as a whole um, about um, their workmanship and their, you know, how hard they work and I've engaged with them and that sort of thing. So completely different than some of the other experiences that we've had with some past contractors. And so I appreciate that. I think for the most part, they've really otherwise tried to be good stewards and, and um, maybe bitten off more than they could chew um, in our community. Maybe we bit off more than we can chew in, in our community um, this summer. I know we were very anxious and we really wanted to get a lot done. Um, and so, but I would really hope that regardless of us um, passing this that we, that the expectation is to get as far as we can and still get as much done as we can. And that this doesn't give anybody permission to slow down um, at all, but to keep moving forward and get as much of this done um, yet this year and, and uh, because we have some frustrated uh, residents. Thank you.
Thanks, trees. Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Next item is Consideration of Pay Request Number One, twenty twenty P C C Patching Project. Justin? You'd like to address that one?
Sure can. This is the work primarily done on Seventieth Street. Uh, it just includes removals from down by the bridge approach. So mainly Seventieth Street patching and then just removals of concrete on the bridge approach there on Seventy-third Street.
Can we get a motion to pay for this?
So I moved.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item is Consideration of Pay Request Number Five for College Drive Improvements. Entertain a motion?
I'll have to approve.
Any discussion? No discussion? Roll call.
Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Harms?
Yes.
Next item is Consideration of Pay Request Number Five, twenty twenty Street Improvement Project, Allison and Sixty-Ninth. Motion to pay?
Okay.
Any discussion?
Maybe we could um, just get, I know I was on the call on Friday, maybe before this is, or when we're done with these pay requests, maybe we could um, just get an update on where those projects are and the next stages of that. So everybody's on the same page.
Let's address the pay requests and then we'll get reports and we'll see, we can get some updates on the projects.
Thank you.
Got a motion in the second, uh, roll call.
Skerries? Joseph Jones?
Yes.
And Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Harms?
Yes.
Next item is Consideration of Pay Request Number Four on University Avenue Project. Motion to pay?
Second.
Discussion or we'll get, when we get the updated projects? Roll call.
Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Harms?
Yes.
Dalton, you wanna send your mayor's reports, but if you wanna kind of give us, between you and Justin, give us an update on the projects?
Yeah, I guess there hasn't been much change since the Friday afternoon meeting with that rain that we got in the long holiday weekend. Uh, and then as far as work forecasted for this week, minimal work. We're gonna begin on removals, but with the forecast, I don't know if it would be wise to take out pavement just to have the dirt underneath it get rained on. So it is gonna be a slow week on the projects.
So does that put us another week behind on these projects?
Uh, definitely doesn't help the schedule.
So when I'm looking for an, an update, Dalton, and I do appreciate your um, doing the updates and what, this one of the things we talked about on Friday, I think that some people didn't participate or aren't able to participate there, but one of the things we've consistently asked for is an update on our council, at our council meetings on those. So I'm just, if you could give an overview um, of each one of those projects, what phases we're in and what the time where we are in that, I think that would be helpful.
Justin, you got that update from Friday handy there? Uh, one moment.
I have four of them sitting right here.
The other thing real quick, why we're, why you're looking for those, um, one of the questions that I had is, so with this delay and um, the work, what's the plan, um, what's the communication plan to let residents know that either, so like for example, I live off college. So um, you know, the folks that are directly and indirectly impacted by that street phase four potentially happening or not, what, what will be the communication to folks to let them know that this isn't gonna happen? But then, you know, at what point in time and what's the plan for communicating this delayed work to anybody that's impacted on those streets?
As far as communicating the delays on college, I hesitate to reach out to these residents yet because I'm hopeful and optimistic that that works and to get done this year. Um, so I'm not gonna reach out to, then like a letter or a postcard out to anybody, but we'll put it in our Friday updates that the council took action on September eighth to allow yada, yada, yada. As far as sixty-ninth street, I think we've got a pretty decent idea of what our stopping point is gonna look like, but I don't really want to reach out to these folks until we're a little bit closer and I've got, you know, it, it's a done deal. Are we stopping at phase two? Are we gonna stop in phase three? So um, we're sitting here at September eighth, we've got over two months before the contracted completion date. So I think we've got quite a bit of time on that. We'll definitely reach out to them. I just don't want to give them, here's what might happen.
No, and I appreciate that. I'm not suggesting that we tell them. I just want to make sure that we have a plan in place that, that we're, that there is going to be a communication with them to let them know as it, either that decision is made or whatever, because people are already talking about it and so, and they're speculating. And so I think we should just get ahead of the curve because we know when people start to, I mean, we know what we hear and, and it's better to be on the front end of that as opposed to the back end.
Yeah, definitely. So we'll, we'll put language in there in the project updates. We get quite a few, quite a few visits on our website for those every week. And then uh, as we get closer, we'll do direct mail pieces to the affected residents.
Dalton, I do have a question and I hope my internet will last through this. I'm kind of not too sure that it will, but um, how are we going about talking to people kind of um, like about retaining walls or um, issues of where we might have to put a retaining wall in or we're going to have to grade and grade into their property? When are we discussing this with the residents? When are they notified of this? And are they given options? Are they, is an engineer coming up and talking to them and explaining to them, this is what's going on, this is what's happening? Or how does this, how does the retaining wall issue work?
Off the top of my head, I'm not aware of any retaining walls on any of our streets this summer. Justin, am I incorrect in that?
There's none planned, no.
How about grading? Is there any grading being done? I'm specifically thinking of Plaza and College.
Gotcha. Yeah, so we're gonna be grading. Um, if we gotta get back on the people's property, we'll let them know, but all but a few properties, the work is limited to the right of way.
So what are we going to discuss with these people? Because I know that the not knowing at all is kind of what is is kind of affecting them, making them ask questions and maybe and maybe getting on top of this or getting ahead of this would help kinda ease some of the issues that we've had with residents being upset with things.
I get, are you asking like, when we, when are we gonna tell them how we're gonna grade the right of way and stuff, or I guess I'm struggling here?
Well, are, are we talking with them? I mean, when you look, I'm just gonna say Pleasant College because that's one specifically that I've seen. Um, there's going to need to be some work done there. And I'm just wondering if the resident, you know, kinda knows what work will be done. Um, I know that she was given an option of curbing. I don't even know what that means, so um, I, I guess I just want to make sure that if we have to um, grade or do something to people's property or if they start asking questions that we are talking with them and, you know, explaining to them, this is what we're gonna do, this is how it's gonna work, this is how it'll look.
Yeah, so I guess if, let's just talk specifically about College and Plaza. Um, Justin talked with that homeowner while they were forming it up. The contractor worked with the homeowner and then Wyatt um was out there when they were pouring it and he also talked to the homeowner, so I mean, I, I don't I don't know if it's so much as getting the information peo- to people as it is getting information to people that they don't like. And I think it's inevitable on these projects that people don't like the information we're gonna give them.
Well, when I went back there the next day or two days later, whatever day it was, um, I asked, you know, how are things going? And she said that she talked to one of the engineers and she asked, well, how will it be graded? And it was, it'll be graded. Well, how will this work? I, I'm I just don't understand how this will work and I personally don't understand how it works because this isn't my field. So I, I would just hope that we were able to give her better instructions so that we kind of calmed her down a little bit and kind of rested her, her problems or her concerns um, by explaining to her um, what we were gonna do.
Sure. Well, so I, I'm, I'm gonna go back on this one and just, I don't think it's an issue with this specific situation and getting information to people. I think it's getting them information that they like, cause I can guarantee you the engineer that they talked to is Justin. And you guys all know Justin. I don't think you're gonna meet a better field engineer to go out and talk to your residents. So I, I am very confident that Justin didn't just brush her aside. He answered her questions. He spends a lot of time on these projects, talking to the residents. So I guess more generally, um, if we're limiting the work to the right of way and it's not gonna directly impact private property, I don't know if it's such a great idea that we get into telling them exactly exactly what's gonna be happening. I, I just see that kinda muddying this up a bit. That's, that is not typical for how these street projects go elsewhere.
Okay.
Justin, Justin, do you have that update handy?
Yes, I do. Um, I will start on Sixty Ninth Street. Um, the contractor was gonna start this week uh backfilling and doing the restoration work. The plan was to get it all backfilled and seeded by the end of the week on all phases of Sixty Ninth Street, College and Allison that have been completed, paved. But with the rain, I doubt that is gonna happen, um, but that was a goal at the end of last week. Um, and then they were also on Sixty Ninth, they were gonna start pavement removals and driveway removals on stage two as well, starting this afternoon, but that hasn't happened as well. Um, my hunch is they may remove the asphalt on that second phase um, and leave the concrete, but we'll have to s- see what the forecast brings for the rest of the week. Um, all those residents are in their driveways um, on, on stage one for that project. Um, College Drive, stage one, all the residents are back in the driveways. Contractor again was gonna start backfilling um and seeding. They have a lot of it done already backfilled. Um, and they were also gonna install, install the mailboxes. Uh, there's a couple intake tops they have to install too. Stage two, they were gonna finish working on any water main stuff and storm sewer a- along with uh sanitary, um, but that's all getting put or pushed back too with the rain. Stage two today, they were gonna start installing storm sewers, starting at Plaza and working west. Um, that has also been pushed off to the rain. Um, Allison, they looked like they finished all of it. Maybe there's a little bit of area of backfilling. Um, they're also gonna seed again. Uh, mailboxes have been installed um, for stage two of that. The removals have been done. They were gonna start with the sanitary sewer repairs or today and then start storm insulation later in the week. Um, again, those have all been held off. University, they were gonna continue on the storm sewer installation at Seventieth Streets um, as well as some backfilling and restoration, along with installing some electrical items like the um light poles and they'll work on the traffic signals as well. Uh, the, for the patching project, they were planning on pouring the last of the inside lanes today. But that didn't happen. They were, thought about, they were gonna try to shoot the gaps in between the rains, but they decided better on that one. Um, they were thinking maybe tomorrow. I haven't he- heard word on that one. So it's just that last southbound part and the median there of the approach to finish. And then once that's all finished and it pitched maturity, they were gonna start on the outside lanes, which they were hoping at the end of the week. But I'm assuming that's getting pushed back to next week, so. Um, just looking at the forecast, it doesn't look good the rest of the week, so I wouldn't expect too much happening on these projects this week. I think I hit everything on those projects.
Justin and Dalton, just a couple of questions. So did Megan Jo- uh, John's questions get answered? I know she sent an additional email. Did we get, did somebody respond to her? Did we get her questions answered for University Avenue?
Yes.
Okay, um, could somebody share those with us so we have them?
I can make sure that they get forwarded.
Thank you, Susan. Um, and then what is the plan for communication on University? So sixty eighth, sixty ninth east, because that is not, that's pushed out to twenty twenty one. So has that been communicated or when is that gonna be communicated with those residents? Because I have people who still think it's happening.
Well, the project timeline is in those uh those flyers that we've been printing out at the city hall and it's on the it's as well. If you're talking about a direct mail piece, that's something that we can do.
Okay, I'm just thinking about whether or not that's something we can put in the newsletter. Is it, I mean, there, just some additional pieces to make sure that we're, we're making sure that people understand.
Yeah, definitely.
Because they don't necessarily look at, I mean, again, unless they're seeking out specifically, a lot of people are, are talking about that. Um, and then um um, I guess I was just looking for an update. Um, Susan asked earlier about the, the grading issues at Plaza and College. Um, when we were out there the middle of last week, um, we, uh, the mayor came out, we were supposed to um, they, they've said that he would get us an update on what would happen before it would happen. I never heard anything for the rest of the week. And so I guess I'd like to know how the decision was made to move forward and um, was there, were there any considerations made particularly for the issues that were brought forward? And how do we ensure that if we do have flooding issues or water buildup issues and those sorts of things? How are those things going to be um addressed? Moving forward. So I guess I, first of all, I have concern because I spent, I spent hours on that corner with residents, concerned residents um, who had concern. I was told that I was gonna get a follow-up and um, that we would be updated. Um, and then I, there, there's been zero communication on this since. So I'm looking for an update on that and why we didn't receive any communication.
Last you said was, I would get with Justin and get with Dalton and if anything changed, you would be told. Nothing changed.
That wasn't
My memory, that maybe not be yours, but that was mine.
Well, I don't think that was the memory of the six other people that were standing there.
Okay.
I think for the good of the group here, Theresa, do you wanna maybe give a background on what it is you're talking about?
Sure, I'm happy to. So um, uh, Sue and I were out, um, as we have been on multiple streets um, uh, distributing the updates on um the construction project and the phases that are impacted. Um, it had been very, very well received. Certainly has brought forward additional request, requests and questions and those sorts of things. People have appreciated it. And so, um, because they didn't have the updates and they didn't, weren't being communicated with. So um, we um, said that we would be willing to do this and that's essentially what we've done. And it's been, it's been well received and appreciated regardless. Um, so we had been on college the previous week directly to let those folks know what the update was. Um, and had talked with this residence uh, at the corner of, of Plaza and College and um, on the southeast corner and uh and, and she actually had no major concerns, um, but nobody had really communicated with her what was gonna happen um, there at, she's the corner lot, um, and what was gonna happen there um, with sidewalk or grading um, or any of those, those issues. She actually um, is doing a lot of her, her own work. She's contracted a company to come in and um uh, provide, basically level out her ground. She's created a patio. She's put it in, she, I mean, she's put a lot of money into her property um, to um, you know, while this construction was going on to make um, significant improvements to her yard. And so um, I think she, so then she had great concern and consideration when the sidewalk was laid um, laid out for pouring and um, and was very concerned and, and had a lot of reservations not only with the aesthetics of it, but the design and all of those sorts of things. So um, over the years, I've learned a lot about why sidewalks are created the way that they are and the leveling and the elevations and the ADA requirements and all of those sorts of things. We were, we've been through those things on Sixty Fourth Street, right? And so um, where we know that there have been errors and we had to go back and do things and change things and all of those sorts of things. So um, we were very, we're very fortunate to have um, residents in our community who um, have experience in this space and um, and Dalton, we called you and you nor Justin were available to come out and take a look and address the residents' concerns and suggested um, that the concrete was gonna be poured first thing in the morning, so there really wasn't a chance to make any changes. So um, our concern at that point in time is if you're going to pour something and it's not right um, or there's concerns with it, why would you pour it if you're gonna have to tear it up and at what cost and who pays that cost? Um, was the, is really the, the concern. And so that's really what I come back to as a, as a council member, um, and with lots of concern and reservation. Um, I understand that we, we, you can't please all the people all the time. And I understand that um, yet things have to be done a certain way. Um, I think um, what I would have appreciated in this is that somebody would whether it had been Justin or you, come out and been part of the conversation because I think it would have made a big difference. And um, and so um, I think there was a lot of frustration. So we relied on other people who have experience in this space to come out and give us some guidance. And in doing so, they two, now professionals, an architect and an engineer who live in our community um, gave their uh opinion and expressed reservations and concerns with it as well. Um, then actually did an incredible job kind of trying to settle, settle the resident down and explain to her why things, some things have to happen. Um, and that sort of thing. I understand with all of this that the um, that the concerned area is within the public right of way. I get all of that. We, we communicated that to her. We did all those sorts of things. And I appreciate your comments about your, you know, sometimes people just don't like what you have to see, to say, or have to ta- what they hear. In the same token, I think that these people live in our community. They are our residents and that we need to take into account sometimes what they say and sometimes we need to have a little empathy. I know you've all heard me say that before. Um, and so I, I just, I was just disappointed with how the whole situation was handled. Um, I think we probably i- could have made some tweaks and make some improvements. Um, but it, it was, uh, we were gonna shove it down her throat, any, regardless because she expressed concerns and I, I really was disappointed that that was how the approach that that you all decided to, to take. Instead of trying to find a way to find some resolution and help the resident maybe have a little bit of a win whether it was, you know, widening an area or, or um, looking at it differently or making sure that we're not gonna have flooding and pooling of water, um, as others suggest that we probably will have. And so um, it doesn't look like the curb cuts in the right area. That was the first thing that I noticed. Again, not an expert in this space, but um, it just seems odd. I've not been down to look at it yet, um, since it's been poured. I look forward to, to doing that between rain showers and, and daylight. Um, and so that's, that's the area and the item of concern um, that I think Susan and I are, um, have, have brought up and expressed some concern in. And um, so again, just wondering, we, we, we were told that we would um, that it would be brought to your attention and that we would get an update and that, and then there was no communication. So I think just e- expressing some frustration on our end as well that you know, residents come to us because we represent them and um, we're bringing concerns forward and we want, we hope to be able to, you know, have the same respect in return to be, somebody to be able to communicate back with us to let us know what's going on or if changes are made or if they're not made, why. Um, because at the end of the day, we have to, you know, approve the payment for these items. And then we have to continue, we, we continue to represent and, and um, address the concerns of the residents and I'll stop talking. I don't know that it makes a difference, but I just want you to know where our concerns are.
Right would be council reports. Susan?
Nothing.
Hey, hope, hopefully this'll work here.
It's working.
Thank you to all the staff, the council members, the mayor, the children of council members and the residents who helped to move debris for those who needed it uh after our storm of twenty twenty. It was heartwarming to see the neighbors helping neighbors after this storm. It just goes to show what a great city Windsor Heights is and that we are surrounded by wonderful people that are not afraid to help their neighbors. Ms. Harms kind of already talked about this. We spent quite a few nights out talking with residents. Uh, we were able to hit Allison and College. We decided that we would kinda take this as um, conquer and divide or divide and conquer. So we, it was well, um, the residents were very happy that we were out um, and actually talking with them, communicating with them. Um, they were happy to also kinda find out more about the construction, where they could find information. Um, one of the things that, that we consistently heard was uh that there was not good communication to start with um, over that construction. They also, a lot of people were not happy with the Zoom meetings that are at two PM on a Friday as it's not a time that most people, most residents are able to attend. Um, so at least we're kinda moving in the right direction with the with that, but um, also just wondering where we are with the work session that I requested August twenty first. I haven't heard anything about it and I'm not exactly sure if that got thrown in emails or where we are with that. So if somebody could just answer that. Thank you.
Nice. Any reports?
Yeah, I was going to say thanks to Michael Fredo for covering Dart for me when I was out last week. And they presented some information from the optimization study that I've not had a chance to go through yet, but I will update everyone once I have. And it's been mentioned once before, but moving in the park on the 25th, we're going to do Back to the Future. And hopefully have a great surprise for everyone who attends. And MPO is next, next Thursday. That's it.
Mike Jones?
Bravo is next week. We had a lengthy Public Works meeting back on the 26th, part of which you heard about today. In addition to some flood mitigation, we also had discussions about ash tree management. And for what it's worth, the committee made the recommendation or the agreed that there should be removal of the public right of way ash trees in accordance with what the DNR recommended. And Dalton is going to get bids for trees that cannot be removed with city labor and also get bids for treatment. Also discussion about providing assistance to property owners to help them remove ash trees on private property. There was not any support from the group at all on that. And there was also some discussion about working with Westmorene on traffic signals and Urbendale on the sewers, which I believe is going to, some, something might be brought to council for that in the future. Other than that, nothing else.
Theresa?
A couple of things. So I thought the MetroNet agreement was going to be and presentation was going to be on the agenda today. When will we see that?
21st. It's scheduled. It will be on the 21st.
Thank you for the update. And then Chad and I met about getting the Public Safety Committee back together. We have set out agenda for the next four months with a variety of topics to cover. And so I, I have it typed up, but I need to do some edits and then I'll send that out. If anybody has any questions or if there's anything else you want us to give updates on or, or consider, please let us know and we can fit that, we'll work at putting that into our agenda. Just a couple of other things. Thanks Chad for putting out the radar sign request that we had on 75th and 74th and some of the other streetways. So those have been very well received. And would love to continue to see, you know, have those moved through the community. One of the other requests that I've had as we've been out into different parts of the city, I've been both south of university, I've been up in the northwest corner and then really walked every street between 73rd and 80th Street in the course of the last few weeks since our last council meeting. And they've requested, and I've shared this with Chad already, to see more of a police presence. So they would like to see the, our Public Safety Department more regularly through on, on their streets. And so I thought that was a, a, a good request and good feedback from our residents about what they're hoping to see in our community. I also heard very positive comments about how our communications are starting to improve. So kudos to Whitney. And I think that we've, we've got some ideas for suggestions that we'll offer to the Communications Committee that we heard from residents. There's still requests for paper in your mailbox update that people want to see. So I just share that as feedback that we heard from folks. And then a big thank you to our Public Works and Public Safety Departments for all of their help during the storm. And I know there were a lot of interesting requests and a lot of neighbors in need. And much to Susan's comments earlier about, you know, we had neighbors helping neighbors and, you know, kids and adults of all ages doing everything that they could to do that. And I, I know one of the, the comments that I heard from almost every residence was, thank you for picking up the storm debris. So that was, again, people, people very much appreciated. And I think it was obviously very much the right thing for us to do with the set of circumstances. So just a few comments on things that we've heard as we've been pounding the pavement. So thanks.
I will move back on debris pickup. We instituted approximately 165 loads, semi-loads of debris up until the 31st. And the cost up until then was roughly $120,000. We still have four more days to pick up. Dalton, thank you for assisting with the little tractor and the trucks and everybody else that was out there picking up the little stuff that we didn't need the big crawler for. So that's where that stands right now. Mark, anything to say? Intercity administrators report?
Yes, just a couple of things regarding storm debris cleanup FEMA reimbursements. We are tracking all of these costs and there is a FEMA public assistance program assigned to the DeRachio storm. We will submit our costs under a FEMA project similar to what was done with flooding and was currently also being done with the FEMA, FEMA COVID-19 reimbursable costs. Finally, I want to say that I've enjoyed my time with the city and I think Windsor Heights has a bright future. I'm sure Dennis will do a good job working with the staff to keep the council and the residents informed on city operations. Thank you.
Mark, thank you very much for the last thirteen and a half months. We appreciate it greatly. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mark.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I can.
We'll go. Theresa?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Rick Jones?
Yes.
Man Harms. Folks, we're adjourned until the 21st, 6:00 PM. Don't get wet out there. It's been raining pretty good. Thank you.